Well, good morning, Manistee County. And we're here again talking about politics is local. I'm John Helge.
I'm Nate Markham.
And we've got a guest today that we're very excited to have on the podcast. And Karen Goodman has joined us. Karen is a county commissioner. And but before we get to Karen, I want to just bring you up to date on some of the things that are going on in Manistee County. Obviously, and likely highly likely that this podcast won't drop before the Fourth of July Parade and the whole National Forest Festival. But that's ongoing right now here in Manistee. And we hope that you folks have enjoyed it and will enjoy it. And I just want to make you aware, on Thursday, the 17th of July, a couple of things are going to happen. And I want to just kind of excited about them. Thursday, the 17th of July nationally is going to be a day dedicated to making good trouble. And this is in honor and in memory of Representative John Lewis. And we're going to join in that in Manistee County. And we're going to do it a little bit differently. We're going to gather in Oneckama at their village park right off M 22, Nate. M 22, one of the most beautiful highways in America. And, you know, we're going to gather there with our protest signs and everything right there in the park on the right on the edge of M 22. A lot of people will be going by to see it. And we're going to make a little bit of good trouble. And this is something that I think would be really important for all of us to try to make an appearance at. And also to hopefully get you to come, we're going to then, right after that demonstration, we're going to have our annual Oneckama picnic. It's a potluck picnic with a bratwurst roast. And we'll provide the bratwurst. And if you could bring a dish to pass and your own beverage, we'll gather there. And we're going to have a speaker from our local Manistee County Conservation District. Josh Shields and Tyler Dula are two outstanding members of that organization. And they're going to tell us a little bit about what they're doing here in Manistee and Mason County to help with our environment and sustainability. I think it's a great day. That'll be Thursday, the 17th in Oneckama, starting at 4:30. So we hope to see you there. What do you think, Nate? You got anything else you want to talk about that's going on in town?
Well, we have our Fourth of July Parade. I don't know if this will be up in time. But we're doing our Fourth of July Parade and all the Democrats will be marching. Bring your sign. And that's going to be a good time.
Absolutely, absolutely. And again, further thinking out a little bit on Saturday, August 2nd, Saturday, the 2nd of August, we're going to have a sunset party at the Douglas Park Lions Pavilion on First Street Beach. And that'll start at 6 o'clock. And it'll be a good time. And we've just had our, you know, to celebrate our beautiful sunsets here and a chance to get together with like-minded people and, you know, really celebrate summer. So again, we got a lot of good things going on. Keep your ear to the track and we'll continue to let you know what's going on and when it's going on. Well, let's turn to our guests. How are you doing, Karen?
Pretty good. How are you?
Well, we're still happy that you're here with your busy schedule. For someone who's retired, you're pretty busy.
I retired for a weekend. I had a whole weekend.
That's wonderful. Well, Karen, you know, could you tell us a little bit about your background and, you know, everything that you've been involved with over the years? I'm just going to turn it over to you.
Certainly. I have been in the, let's see, I've been on the county commission for 10 years at least, going into my four-year term. So, you know, by the end of this, it would be 14 years that I've been part of the county commission. Got on the county commission because I was raised in a family in which if you don't like something and you think it's wrong, get out there and change it. Just don't sit back and complain about it. So, you know, in the past 10 years or so, I watched as Manistee County kind of started shriveling. We weren't making gains. We all had hopes and dreams, but nothing was moving forward. So I thought it was important to run to kind of help with development of economic stability and or growth. Our housing has always been an issue. Our, where I live is in the city, so I focus on some of the city things such as, you know, infrastructure, roads, you know, things like that. So getting in, getting involved in the commission, I am proud of the job that we do. We act in a way that is best for the community, not best for a party in times where we have, you know, terrible division in attitudes regarding whether you're on one side or another. The commission really looks well to say no. Does that stuff come up every once in a while? Probably in my 10 years, I can think of maybe two times where it really came up and had to be addressed. We don't also let it die. We just address it right there, which I think is also a great thing, to bring people back to what's for the community, not for your party. I had that statement happen just a little while ago, and I had to redirect that and say, this is not about party, this is about Manistee County. And I will always put Manistee County first. I am a master's level social worker. I have worked 40-plus years in the mental health system, either private, in hospitals, medical social work, mental health, developmental disabilities. I've been around, I tell people I'm old as dirt. Been in the field for a long, long time. But in those many, many years, I've had an opportunity to work through many, many systems. That kind of was something that I fell into, being able to do program design, development, implementation, research, budgeting, all of the things that require in order to move something forward. So I've done that for a lot of time. And so then I took that to the commission and started putting myself in positions where, you know, maybe I could help this group or that group. And I got on several boards. Of course, the commission requires that you be on certain boards that we operate, such as my assignments are, some of them play to my strengths. I'm on their personnel committee. I'm on their policy committee. I also oversee the whole safety of the whole county, which is an amazing group of men and women that get together from all avenues, from DNR all the way to Coast Guard, to our sheriff, our chief, everybody, the fire department, 911, they're all there. It's an amazing group. And then Airport Authority, which is really hopping, as you guys have probably heard. And then Housing Action Team, which is something that I resurrected. We kind of had it in our system. It was dealing with some grants that we had been offered years ago to help people rehab their homes. We managed that for a couple of years. It was a very difficult program, a lot of responsibilities to add, a lot of paperwork and stuff that the county took on. But then the funds kind of dwindled and so that program ended. But I asked to resurrect it, to meet up with the Human Service Council, which is a very important group within our community that's talking about housing, not only housing for persons with limited income, but workforce housing and/or missing middle housing. So I asked to resurrect that, and the commission thought that's a great idea, trying to bring everybody who has any touches housing in any way, shape, or form to a table, to be more action-centered instead of research-based or, you know, just communicating. I want to move forward on stuff. I also am on the Housing Commission, the City of Manistee Housing Commission. That was an important one to get onto so that I can kind of get involved in, all right, the housing projects that are over on the north side. We all know how that was in despair in some ways, though we were rehabbing it, it was not exactly the best job that the rehabbers did. You know, just millions of dollars for work that is just, it's nice, but it should have been better. So, yeah, so I keep busy. You know, I like being on these different groups. They all have a theme. And so when I can be on like the Housing Action Team and Housing Commission, I can bring different people to the table and then kind of see where everything connects. You know, and bringing our land bank from the county, we're very proud of the land bank. Rachel has done a fabulous job. It's one of the most highly recognized in the state of Michigan, even though it's probably one of the smallest. We've done great things. So being able to kind of have all the players at the table is very important because then we move past redundancy and get into action. So that's me.
Well, I really appreciate it. A couple of things that you've just said, and I think that are important for us to dig into maybe a little bit more. And when you talk about the different boards, advisory boards, you know, that type of thing. And I think I see maybe a thread of similarity weaving its way through these things. Where these boards are failing is it's typically a leadership issue, isn't it?
Yes. Yes, I have many years' experience working with different boards, you know, and board function is really, it makes or breaks any project, any organization that you have. And if your board is dysfunctional, you will get nowhere. You may think that you're, you know, doing the right thing. And people only get, I mean, around here and, you know, everywhere, not all, I mean, I'm not, boards are free. I mean, it's your time.
It's volunteer.
Yeah, you don't get paid all the time for all the boards and stuff. So walking in and volunteering your time, you're there for the right reason. You think that you can be helpful. But then you get stuck in the dysfunction of the board. You don't ever really know what your role is. I think that board education is always minimal. And then you don't know what your role is in the sense of, well, how do I manage this? If I don't agree, what do I do? Do I keep my mouth shut because everybody else will, you know, look at me as if I'm wrong? I mean, I just had this situation. It's like I was in a big board, it's a regional board, and, you know, they're all like, oh, yes, yes, yes. And I said, oh, no. You know, I mean, I'm always feel like I'm the one that's going to go, no, this is why you wouldn't do that. But that's important for you to educate yourself too. And I think that people come in with a kind heart and want to do the right thing, but then just get caught in that quagmire of not being able to know what you should do, how you should handle it, and if you're going to get your board members mad at you. That is one thing I truly, truly appreciate is that when I've been in boards that transition, you know, the DVA Board, the Housing Commission Board, those were two big boards that have transitioned over the years. Lots of great people before me and lots of great people trying to do the right thing. But sometimes the board and its leadership outside, like the person that's running stuff, may influence that board in a negative way. So then they don't know how to handle that. So I found that in getting in those groups where they're transitioning, you start to provide people with more support, more education, and the ability to have differences. I have a lot of differences with a lot of people, but it doesn't mean I don't like them. That's a big difference.
That sounds to me like what you're saying too, and what I've observed, especially with, I'm very proud of the Manistee County Board of Commissioners. Because I look at non-functional boards, you know, around the state. And you guys really have the best interest of our, you know, all residents of the county in mind. And I applaud the board for that. But I have always talked about the three Cs, you know, it's communication, collaboration, and then compromise. You know, and I think you're embodying all three of those Cs in what you're doing. That's what I'm hearing. And I really want to thank you for that because it's messy, it's hard. You know, legislation, government, you know, anytime is difficult. But without those three Cs, it's totally dysfunctional, right?
Correct, totally.
You know, if you're not communicating with the other people that are sitting around the table, if you're not able to collaborate with them, and if you're not able to compromise for a win-win scenario, we're in trouble.
The, as a social worker, you are ingrained in those type of things, you know, empathy, understanding, you know, advocacy, communication, compromising sometimes, finding a spot to come together on things. I mean, if you don't have those in our field, you're going to have a hard time working with people. That's our world. I'm going to use an example of the three Cs. I represent Nasty County. However, I also have jobs and other things that takes me to the state level to represent not only our county, but people within our county. And then I go, of course, you know, national, such as the Big Beautiful Bill. I'm going to bring that up. You know, I certainly have to advocate for Medicaid, Medicare, you know, you can't hit these things also. There's other pieces such as, you know, leave our parks alone, things like that. But my major focus in calling offices like Mullinar's office and arranging to talk with their representatives was to say downstream, you might think this looks good right here and it's not going to be a problem. You know, they talked about redeterminations of Medicaid is what the word they used. And so when I was talking with the person, I first said, to start with, if you're just going to blow smoke, and I'll be honest, if you're going to blow smoke and you're going to give me propaganda, don't waste your breath. If you're going to listen to me, I want to have a conversation. And they did. And I appreciated that. He was really, really attentive to what I had to say and heard what I had to say, even though I wasn't going to change their mind. At the end of it, I says, I know that, you know, we're going to agree to disagree here. And all I can tell you is that things and words that you use like hope, probably, you know, it's not our intention, these things that you said are what I'm going to hold you accountable to. Because down the road, it's going to cost. I mean, any American can look at that and say, do you think, they said it's not redeterminations, it was verifications. And I said, so how are you going to verify the person who is sitting in the woods doesn't have a home and depends on Medicaid? How are you going to verify? Because they just lost their home. Or, you know, this, we all know this is just a way of, you know, hitting the Affordable Care Act. But we have in our community, this is why I'm so upset, our community has like 30-some percent people that depend on the Medicaid Affordable Care Act. Those people who are sitting in places like the restaurants, you know, the gas stations, all of our service industry people need this. So you're wiping that out. Then we have 40-some percent in my current job, 45% in our counties that are on Medicare. So do you think that a small rural hospital not being able to be supported is going to be available to them? Or we have $25 million sitting out there in a brand-new medical care facility? I'm nervous. Because now, if Medicaid's hit for persons, and that's what our county takes, our Medicaid recipients, so here we are. We have medical care facilities that will be impacted. So these are the downstream problems that I don't want to say they, I hate to, I hate to think that people purposely went, ooh, you know, this is how we can do it. But I just don't think they realize that how big the problem is going to be downstream. Who's going to do those redeterminations? You're going to have to hire people. Where are you going to find those people?
Right.
You know, so there's a lot of economic things that are just going to impede our abilities. So I'm trying to get out ahead of that in our community by finding places for like, you know, affordable housing, being able to kind of alleviate some of the difficulties that our own community people will feel. You know, I am talking about our hospital and, you know, that's been such a hard thing for us, losing our OB services. You know, we had to sell the hospital as a company because we could not afford it. It was a huge cost. And we went into that with good faith with Munson and talked about all the things we wanted to keep, especially like the emergency services, the ER or emergency department and ambulance services were critical to us to, as part of the deal. I'm worried. I'm worried.
I know that you're holding them accountable. I know that you're actively engaged, especially with the whole ambulance service situation. Again, that's become a huge issue for all of rural America, you know, especially the rural Michigan. And again, I really appreciate the fact that you're advocating and you're thinking about what's going to happen, you know, six months to a year down the road. Because I'm hearing from a lot of people that, hey, this is not, they're not taking anything away, this is just fraud and waste. It's going to be much more than fraud and waste, you know.
And I will agree with them in the sense that there is fraud, there is waste, there is absolutely, I can, you know, being in the governmental system for 40-some years, I can tell you where it is. You know, I see it. And that's the thing, it's like you have administrative people way at the top saying cut, 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 where you're not talking to people way down here who say, no, that, don't cut that, cut this. You know, so that's really the communication thing. You know, it only goes down, it's not coming up. And I think that, you know, that leads us right into the mental health system. All right? So two years ago, the Mental Health Association and other people, we were able to really stop the attack of privatization on your local community mental health systems. All right, so got rid of that. Well, here we come, two years later, under a different package, just like the Big Beautiful Bill is trying to get the Affordable Care Act, we've got a new way of trying to get privatization in Michigan. And it's coming, unfortunately, from the person who's the head of our department. She is not, the newest thing is, you're putting everything out for bids. And they're refusing in the bid process to allow mental health agencies to apply. Isn't that, it just, it shocks me. You know, so all you're doing is opening up the door for private groups like Michigan, La Crosse Bushfield, or whoever to come in and make these bids. Now, it hasn't gotten real far because mental health agencies are banning together, they're putting in lawsuits, they're, you know, I mean, they're screwing with the mental health code, which they can't do. And they're messing with the laws, of course, you know, which they can't do. But yet, here we are in a world in which laws and rules don't matter. We push through anyways. And, you know, sometimes I feel as if, especially in the mental health system, and I feel this nationally, if we just exhaust them with all of this stuff, you know, while we're doing all this over here, we're pulling money out of their pocket over here, if we just exhaust them, they'll give up. And I find myself sometimes in that, like, oh my God, another battle to fight here. You know, but you have to step back and kind of remember the big picture. If we lose our mental health system to privatization, people who are severe and persistently mentally ill, they're going through maybe a psychotic break. And psychosis is well-maintained with medications. So two things. One, if I don't, if I can't afford my medications now, I'm not going to take my medications, which means maybe my psychosis or maybe, you know, my other illnesses will kind of go back up, won't be managed, and now there's chaos in my life. I don't show up for my job anymore, or I get kind of irritable with people, my family kind of says, no, I'm done with you. I mean, it's just, it gets, it's chaos. And so a private organization is going to look at that one individual and say, hospitalization is like a little over $1,000 a day. So they're going to cost me, as an agency, maybe 10, 20, 30,000, depends, some people, after a psychotic break, every time you have a psychotic break, it takes a little bit longer for a person to kind of come back from that. So I've seen people that will stay, when I ran a psych hospital, they would stay 30 days, $30,000. So I'm a private entity. Am I going to spend $30,000? No, I'm going to push that person over to this mental health system that's sitting in your community. So they're going to get all the high-cost people on the Medicaid budget that, like for our hospitalizations, we have, mental health here has, Manistee and Bensie, has well under $1 million. And you wouldn't believe the amount of people that need to go into hospitalization for short periods of time, get readjusted on their meds, or long periods of time to get back into their abilities. So this is another disastrous.
It would end up much like, you know, with just physical health insurance, which is much easier to say no.
Yeah.
And sadly, when they look at those things, it's a lot less, it costs a lot less to bury them than it does to treat them.
Yes, it does.
And that's a real challenge.
Do you remember the death panels? Well, this new administration, you know, before they were yelling that, you know, with Obamacare, we're going to have death panels, blah, 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 blah. Well, here we are. You guys are doing it now. Because you're going to pick and choose what people are going to be able to be.
And they're not calling it a death panel, they're calling it good business decisions.
Yeah.
Smart business people.
Again, I have absolutely no problem with good fiscal management. Absolutely not. There I agree. However, how you get to it is certainly where I disagree. I am a scalpel person, not a chainsaw person. And I think that that makes a huge difference.
Karen, you brought up a few times in this interview affordable housing. And when I talk to people in the community, that's one of the most important things everybody talks about. And I know there are a few things going on in Manistee. I wonder if you can tell us a little bit more about what's going on with affordable housing?
Well, our Housing Commission, to start with, is your specialist within your community of all things housing. Our Housing Commission has not been in that role for many, many years. Currently, the Housing Commission has finished up the remodeling or renovation, they call it a rad, of both Century Terrace and Harborview. So those two entities, the major work is done. We still are doing some things ourselves that we felt should have been done with the contractors and stuff, but they didn't do it, so we'll do it. So that property, we own, the city and the Cowling Commission owns the property of those two buildings now. Those two buildings are managed by another corporation now for, I can't remember the amount of years, it might be like 20 years or something, and then reverted back to the city, the Housing Commission. But we have 47 scattered sites throughout Manistee, the city of Manistee. Some of them are on Vine Street, up on the hill, some of them are within communities, some of them, you know, there's a few on 12th Street. So we have 47 of these homes throughout the city that we are going to convert. These are old, outdated. The ones on 12th Street were barracks that came from, you know, somewhere up north.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that tells you how old, I think they came like in the 60s or something. And they're terrible. So, I mean, they're livable right now, but they're not nice. So we are going to have to build 47 homes for people in order for us to move those people from those homes. And then rebuild 47 homes so that they have the option to move back into those homes. So our hope is at the end of this, there will be 47 additional homes that will be available for people in our community. Again, it's workforce housing and it's income-based housing. There are HUD rules, lots of different things. Some of the apartment buildings that have been built, if you also encourage or take on what's called Section 8 housing, which is a voucher that you get for a person from the state, which is fed-funded, you get tax incentives and stuff in order to build. And I don't know if the building, build out in Parkdale, if those apartments have that, I'm not 100% sure. But I know that a couple of the builds within the north side and stuff do have Section 8 housing in it. So it'll be the same for us. Our housing, you know, we've, as we look to build more, we will definitely have income-based and then trying to also match the middle, you know, not middle, I'd say workforce housing. Because even middle-income housing is pretty high these days. So it's workforce housing. These are individuals who are sitting down here, I would love to build something right downtown. It would be great. It would be great to have something so that people could walk to their work. You know, downtown has a lot of access to it, you know. You know, a lot of younger people don't have vehicles anymore. That was kind of something that surprised me. There are not a lot of people that want to learn how to drive anymore. So having stuff that's walkable is great. So that's why I always think about our downtown and how it's thriving.
Speaking of downtown, Manistee just received revitalization and place-making grant. Is there anything you can tell us about what's going to happen with that?
Well, the DDA, the Downtown Development Authority, has been working years. I've been on, I just, I just got off of the DDA. I'd been on it for over ten years. It's another group that, you know, was going in a million different directions, had a lot of great leadership people on it, but couldn't, you know, it just wasn't brought together. So several years ago, we got a contract with the Chamber to hire a DDA. We would pay for a DDA position for a director. And then the economic development kind of was brought in there. So you could buy, not buy, you could hire somebody with a good salary and benefits and everything. So that really worked out for us. So the DDA has kind of gotten back on track. It has some great people on it, great leadership. And we've been looking at the streetscape. So redoing the downtown, having sections kind of with the bump outs. Everybody is, you know, we had a lot of meetings and stuff. So we're on a go with that. But at the same time, we have other grants that have been brought in, such as revitalization, the grants for their river walk, and the Northern Hotel.
Right.
That's the revitalization one. I don't know if you've seen the picture, he has the pictures in the window of what the apartment's going to look like. They're beautiful. They probably won't be, I think they're probably be middle-income for people who want to buy like a condo-type of development. So I think that, and I think that's kind of how the North Channel Brewery has kind of been successful, too. They're not outrageously priced, but they're not, you know, cheap in any way, shape, or form. They do a quality job. And so they're kind of like that. We also have a missing middle. We have so many areas of difficulties in our housing. We have persons that, you know, are in workforce. Then we have our whole missing middle that, you know, new families in the United States can't buy a home. They can't build equity. They sit in apartments or rent for years, which builds no equity, no, not, no wealth for themselves. You know? So it's constantly in one hand and out the other with nothing that they can gain in between. So hopefully with some of the projects like Habitat for Humanity has built on murky road, that home, if you have not seen it, is fabulous.
It is.
It's beautiful. That is for our missing middle. This is for workforce people. I know Vanessa Boo, who's working hard on that. She always has great vision and has a great team with her, that volunteer. They have been looking for somebody who is interested in a family that's interested in applying for that home. It's been a little bit rocky trying to get somebody. But, you know, we're trying to get the word out that, hey, and these projects can continue for families, too.
Well, that's absolutely true because, you know, think about it. We need to hire new teachers here in Manistee.
Yep.
A young teacher just coming out of college with probably the six-figure debt load, which is, again, a shame. You know, how can they afford to buy a home? It's going to be, it's a real challenge. And again, you just mentioned all of the opportunities that are there that need to be explored. And one of the things, I know I had a long conversation with Vanessa. She's kind of frustrated because, you know, people don't realize that this is there. How can, she's asking, how can we get the word out? How can we do a better job? And I told her, I think you're doing a great job. I think it's up to, you know, our school superintendents, our plant managers, you know, and our industry.
Yep.
When you hire a young engineer right out of school,
Yep.
again, with a six-figure debt load, I think it's in your best interest to help them find a place to live here so they can be part of your team for a long period of time instead of just training them up and then all of a sudden they're going to move somewhere else because somebody offers them five thousand dollars a year more.
Yep.
This is, you know, the challenge. So again, you're hitting the nail right on the head. And again, we do have some things going on.
Yes.
You know, that are positive.
Yes.
You know, people complain about, you know, tax increment financing and things like that. But I just, I would point out, how much taxes do you think we are making on the Hulk at the Northern Hotel on Washington Street?
Yep, yep.
Okay? And in ten to fifteen years, we will be making a lot more in taxes on that property. But the people that are living there then, for those ten to fifteen years, will be contributing their money to this community and this county.
Yes.
And that's what we really need.
For these tax incentives, it's very hard to kind of like listen to you and say, oh, yeah, forty years this, forty years that, or, you know, twenty years this. I get it, because it's like, man, we want that money right now, but we're investing in a future.
Yeah.
And that's our responsibility. That's what my responsibility is, so that I can invest in the future of Manistee County. Because when I'm gone, it still has to go on.
Yeah.
And so I want something for the future generations. You know, that's how my family operated. They set up for our future, so we have to keep going forward.
Yeah.
The taxation stuff, it's so hard. I mean, we saw a little bit of increase in Manistee County, and it's exciting to me. I mean, it's not huge, but these are important things. It shows, you know, we always feel like we're on the precipice of something, you know, that's happening, and we know it. And then, you know, something hits us and we kind of feel like we go a step back. But then, you know, you get multimillion dollars into our community from a hotel development.
Right.
You know, wow, this is, this is big. And then again, you know, we have Sammy over at Manistee Tourism, you know, she does Manistee County Tourism. She does a fabulous job.
Absolutely.
You know, so we're getting the word out. I think once we identified who we were, which was confusing to us as a community. I grew up in Manistee County as a blue-collar town. Factories.
Yep.
I've watched like Drop Forge, all these different factories that went away, and everything shrunk. But they still are a core and very important to our economy. But we can't survive without something more. The word got out, what a great, wonderful, beautiful west coast of Michigan is like, they call, people call it the Gold Coast. Because anywhere up and down, especially south of us, there were a lot of people retiring to that area, bringing in their lifetime wealth into that area. But I see it's creeping up. And then now, Manistee County, you know, has forty percent, you know, Medicare. So we know that we are a retirement community. So there's another stool, or a leg to our stool. But also, too, that wasn't supporting us because that doesn't support the schools, you know. So now we had to bring in tourism. So we are a tourist town. People are finding us. You know, COVID was difficult, but it got people in their cars and got them driving around. And that is what they saw. So now, we are a three-pronged stool. We have our factories, we have our retirement community, and we have our tourism. It's very difficult in our community to blend those three because if I live here, I get irritated with all the tourism. If I'm a senior and they're building stuff for kids, eh, it doesn't help me. I mean, so it's a constant juggling of making sure that we build, we support, and we advance those three options for our community for success. And I think we're doing okay.
One of the important points, and again, just to wrap all this up, first of all, thank you so much. This has been a great conversation, and we're going to have to get together again. But the point that comes through in everything you're saying, Nick, and I hope you agree, it's all about empathy. We have to empathize, we have to understand and appreciate the fact that, you know, tourism is here. We have to understand, appreciate the fact that the retirement community, people that are here that are snowbirds, for example. And we have to appreciate the fact that we have, we still have, and we're fortunate to have, you know, a manufacturing base here in Manistee County. But the empathy has to be there. It's not just great big, all about me.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and that's one of the things I think that we, as a culture in America right now, are lacking in empathy.
Well, I think it goes across nation-wise, but, you know, empathy, kind of, you know, being able to understand or feel something for your fellow man. But I think it's like having an understanding of the bigger picture is important, too. Like in our community, we want tourists, but we don't want them running our community. So that's why you have things like the Airbnbs and stuff constantly being on the table because you don't want them all in your, I don't, I don't want five of those houses sitting on my street because that disrupts that community. So you've got to balance everything. You have to understand what people are talking about and then support them. Like, you don't want, you know, as a tourist, you don't want tourists in here? Well, I understand that. I understand how difficult it is, but here's the other piece of that. That understanding, that education, empathy, all of this stuff has to be out there so people understand what's going on.
And the ultimate is the compromise.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The ultimate is the win-win scenario.
And it's not perfect.
Right.
We will make mistakes. I make mistakes, but I will learn from those mistakes. I will ask for forgiveness, I guess, only if I know that that mistake is going to be fixed. You know, it's like, we're not perfect. There's a lot of projects in this community that many of us have tried and they failed. Don't expect that just because it failed once, it'll never work again, or some option of it.
Again, failure is just a learning process.
Yep, yep.
Well, again, thank you very much, Nick. Or Nate, do you have anything else that you want to cover?
Nope, that was a great conversation.
Thank you.
Well, again, I want to thank everybody for being with us on this episode. And hey, again, we're up on our YouTube channel, and you can find that link on the website for the Manistee County Democratic Party.
You can also find us on Facebook.
On Facebook, too? Wow, you're doing a great job. He's getting us out there.
You are doing a great job.
Wonderful. So again, thank you all, and we'll be back in a couple of weeks with more good stuff. Take care.